This time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Mike Mesmore to lead us in an invitation.
Yes, dear God, please, please look down upon us and grant us favorable weather, some rain, and please grant wisdom to all the people gathered here today so that we may do the best for the community in the name of the Father and the Son. Holy Spirit on me.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you here in our meeting tonight. Try to get through our meeting as efficiently as we can. Item one is a public announcement events. So our CBB director can forward.
Who do you begin?
Share that with us.
Okay. I want to announce the serial Haverly and Common events. The first event is going to be in July twenty, two thousand thirteen, Movies in the Park. This movie, it's a really a heartwarming story of redemption, and it's featuring casting grounds and Steven Curtis Chapman. I hope everybody can attend it. And for Monday, August fifth, two thousand thirteen, we have from six to ten P.M., the National Night Out and Long Sea Hill Ferry Park. And this is, and the National Night Out is free and open to the public. It will be on August sixth, and this is, this will provide an opportunity for the neighborhood watch groups to gather together and spread safety tips and practices to families of the community and bring all together to meet with the officers of the Haverly and Common Police Department. The next event we have Saturday, ten, from seven to eleven P.M., is Blues on the Hill. The headliner, we have John Nebet in the McElvee Park. And Saturday, August seventeenth, time pending, is the Soy Fest at Los Sea Hill Ferry Park. It's a Christian music concert. That's the upcoming event that we have up for now. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next would be the presentation of proclamations for the SSG George Anthony Conlon Day and for Harlingen Medical Center Day. So at this time, if I could ask the members, family members who have the SSG Conlon, to come forward.
Yes.
Mr. George. And Mr. Conlon. It's Benito Gionis. And Richard Gionis. And T.C. Martin. SSG George Anthony Conlon, Director of Harlingen High School South, nineteen ninety-nine, son of George Francis Conlon, son of Conlon, siblings, Doctor Morgan Chey Conlon. Whereas, Chief Conlon is various. Staff Sergeant Conlon is various, and T.C. Conlon has two sons, Mark Anthony and George Jacob Conlon, Staff Sergeant Conlon, served thirteen years of U.S. military service. Active Army from May twenty-third, two thousand, to July twelfth, two thousand thirteen, and was honored with discharge. Where Staff Sergeant Conlon served as a chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear specialist for ten years of military services. And whereas was deployed in Operation Rocky Freedom and Operation New Dawn, March twentieth, two thousand three, to March twelfth, two thousand four, November fifth, two thousand seven, to January twenty-second, two thousand nine, and August twenty-sixth, two thousand ten, to August seventeen, two thousand eleven. And served through one tour to South Korea in Area One along the Dill Drive Zone from January to December, two thousand six. And whereas wild deployed, conducted nearly one thousand documented counter-attack missions spanning from north to south of Iraq, providing a safe travel to all U.S. civilian and military personnel passengers. And whereas he responded to three real-world chemical missions and helped identify and mitigate the hazardous materials to create a safer environment for Iraqi populace and U.S. military personnel. And whereas Mr. Conlon has received many awards, Combat Action Badge, Follyn medals, Army Commendation Sixth of War, Army Achievement Fourth of War, Army Do-Command Third of War, National Defense Service Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Global War on Terrorism Service, Korean Defense Service, Iraq Campaign, Army Service Rigid, Ribboned Ensign, Deputy Lieutenant, Overseas Service Rigid. And whereas the City of Harlingen presents sincere appreciation to Staff Sergeant Conlon for his many sacrifices to serve our country, for us Americans to enjoy freedoms preserved and great value at great price throughout history. Now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, Texas, to hereby proclaim Staff Sergeant George Anthony Conlon Day and all citizens, and ask them to honor Staff Sergeant Conlon on this very special day and all of his family. And thank you for your service and for your sacrifice to the community and a great example of citizen Harlingen's financial standing. Thank you.
Hooah! Thank you, Mike. You took the words out of my mouth.
I am so grateful for being here today and so proud that I'm here with my family and all in one piece, unlike so many of my other battle buddies that cannot be here to enjoy those kind of recognitions. I can only thank God, my family, my friends, helping me and guiding me throughout my ways through my thirteen years. My best friend and my rock, my wife, been there for me the whole entire time, raising my two kids while I'm gone. Can't say anything else but thank you, I love you. Thank you, Mayor Harlingen. Thank you for this.
Now I'd like to ask Deborah Meeks, Chief Nursing Officer, and Michael Thompson. Deborah Meeks, Chief Nursing Officer for Harlingen Medical Center. We have a very special proclamation for him and to honor him for some great achievements that have really special importance to Harlingen. This is entitled, "Harlingen Medical Center receives three-star rating from the Society of Thoracic Surgeons for Cardiovascular Artery Bypass Grab." Whereas cardiac surgeons at Harlingen Medical Center are experts in the successful delivery of cardiac surgical care and today's advanced surgical procedures. And whereas patients are afforded better outcomes, then cardiovascular surgeons are directly involved in clinical and surgical decisions. And whereas cardiovascular surgeons direct involvement in patient care, helps reduce mortality rates from dexterity rates, ensures appropriate medication usage before, during, and after surgery. Whereas the entire clinic staff practicing at Harlingen Medical Center contributes to the health and well-being of our citizens. And whereas the Society of Thoracic Surgeons has declared upon Harlingen Medical Center a three-star rating, considered a top ranking for cardiovascular artery bypass grab surgeries, a testament to the hospital's commitment to clinical excellence and outcomes. Now therefore, be resolved by Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, proclaimed earlier last week, July tenth, two thousand thirteen, as Harlingen Medical Center Day. The City of Harlingen, we urge all citizens to acknowledge the value and purposes of the Heart Program at Harlingen Medical Center. We also recognize a very special doctor there, Daniel Martinez, who's performing cutting-edge surgeries. He's a local, he's a Valley native, who went off to get his training, but he's come back to our community to practice, and we presented him to the city for things that they're doing there. And we're just excited and delighted to be able to brag that Harlingen has this kind of excellent healthcare service in our community, and it's another, another great thing for the City of Harlingen. So we want to congratulate Harlingen Medical Center. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having us here today. We are very proud of this award. Three-star SPS rating is the highest ranking in this group and does represent our excellent care and outcomes. Last words, Dr. Martinez is trying to use that key on everything he can. I'm not sure. But just a tribute to what our team does over at Harlingen Medical Center, and being able to bring this kind of service to Harlingen, to the City of Harlingen, I think is just one of our greatest accomplishments. Thank you.
Okay, item three, the Neighborhood Clean Sweep, conducted July sixth, two thousand thirteen, East Van Buren to East Jefferson, within distance of Seventy-Seventh and Twenty-first Street, District Two.
Yes, Mayor, this is District Two, Commissioner Newhorns District. We have, you can see here, some of the items picked up. We had a total of three point five six tons of debris removed from the area. We also had quite a bit of tires that were picked up, as you can see from the pictures. We had a total of forty-four tires that were picked up. And you can see some of the other debris picked up. We want to thank all the citizens that participated in this endeavor, and we want to encourage them to continue to help us clean up our community. Along those lines, we want to notify the public that our next cleanup is August the third, and it's going to be District Three, Commissioner Mesmore District, and it'll be on Haynes Drive to Twenty-Fifth Street, from Clifford to Drudge Avenue.
All right. It's always, those are great events, and they really do make a difference in our communities. So I want to thank all the volunteers and staff for keeping that organized. I'm going to take an item out of order and just go to item eighteen, Board Appointments. I think we have one in the board member we would like to recognize who's here, so we'll do all of them. Item eighteen.
We have one reappointment, Carlos Perez Jr. to the Downtown Improvement District Board.
If anybody, if anyone's here that we name, you can actually stand up and directly finish.
Okay, I'd like to reappoint Bill Holloman to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Reappoint Frank Hale to the Downtown Improvement District. Reappoint Robert Salmeron to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Appoint Elizabeth Jennings to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Reappoint Rod Snell to the Tennis Advisory Board. And I'd like to appoint John Grimes, who I believe is here with us today, to the Veterans' Advisory Board. And Fernando Jimenez to the Veterans Advisory Board. And reappoint Michael Alex to the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
I got to appoint as a veteran, Advisory Board, I got John McVay Jr. and also Carlos Jr. to.
Anybody else? I'd like to point Danny Pierre Al to the Harlingen Community Improvement Board, the Four-B Board. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments as well.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you all. Item four is approval of the minutes of May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Are any documents or motion to approve the minutes?
So, Mayor?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Consent agenda items five A through five F, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take action to accept or reject bids and work contract to replace the existing DV one hundred incinerator for the disposal of carcass with a new incinerator located at five oh four fifty-fourth Street.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, on June the fifth, the state staff received five bids on the proposal to replace the incinerator that's used to get rid of carcasses for the animal control. And we're recommending the one that was submitted by B&amp;L Cremation Systems at a cost of seventy thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars.
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
What's wrong with the old one?
It's initially, it was purchased by the Police Department, and in nineteen ninety-nine, before our prime time, it was given to Animal Control. The purpose for that was to burn confiscated drugs and other things. It was not intended for, it's called pathological waste for that. The rating for our usage is fifty pounds, so for other usage it was a hundred, but for us it's, anyway, now TCUQ has new requirements, and it's not, does not meet those requirements.
So this will just bring things up to spec?
Yes, sir.
Sir, any other, are there any other questions? Is there a motion to accept the bid from B&amp;L Cremation Services?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign, motion carries. I need a backup. Was there anybody here from the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department? I'm sorry, I was supposed to present even these earlier items, so I'll go back to the item on the neighborhood cleanup. A number of, a number of the youth, the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department participated in that bid, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And, 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 we wanted to recognize, Antonio Fernandez, Leslie Garcia, Rebecca Leescuero, Ryan Kenneth Martinez, Elaine Garcia, Harvey Patton Jr., Marco Rivas. Would you like to introduce yourself to those who?
I'm, 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 I'm,
Block one forty-three Harlingen Landmark Company Subdivision located between Matt's Avenue and North Seventy-seven, west of G Street.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, the applet is requesting to, uh, final plat approval for proposed nine-lot multifamily subdivision. As you can see, it's located on the south side of Matt's Avenue, just west of G Street. Proposed use will be for, for multifamily units, uh, simply duplex lots. Water and wastewater service will be provided by Harlingen Water Works. The zoning for this was approved on final reading on the consent agenda to multifamily, multifamily district, so its compliance would require zoning for, for development. All items on the final plat checklist have been addressed. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, is there a, uh, is there a motion to approve the final plat?
I approve that we approve the final plat, the new subdivision phase two.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. I'm going to skip item eleven, we'll come back to it. Item twelve, consider take action to approve the preliminary plat advantage of Harlingen subdivision consisting of two commercial lots and twenty point one oh one, eight acres out of a part of block eight Stewart Place subdivision, survey forty-one over here on the west side, Palm Court Drive here on West Lincoln.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, the proposed subdivision consists of two commercial lots. It's located on the west side of Palm Court Drive at the end of the Lincoln Avenue. This is Lincoln Avenue and Palm Court Drive. It's for two commercial lots. Uh, water and wastewater services will be provided by Harlingen Water Works. They are proposing a private street, which would be the extension of Lincoln Avenue with a turnaround. All items on the preliminary plat checklist have been addressed, and staff is recommending approval subject to the engineer coordinating with a professional engineer to, uh, ensure that the water mains and, uh, are situated in appropriate locations.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Yes, I do have this one. It, it's gonna be, we're just talking about lot one, not lot two, or are we probably talking about the whole area?
It's the whole area, it's two lot subdivision, this is lot one, and in the middle of this section here is lot two.
But, but what we're doing tonight is for the whole.
Correct.
Oh, okay, I wanted to make sure. I, I read it, I was kinda confused when I saw the, the plat. No more questions.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to approve?
There was a motion already.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consider to take action to approve and adopt ordinance on first reading amending ordinance number ninety-eight dash fifty-eight to establish school zones along Teague Avenue and Lozano Avenue for the new ninth grade academy.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Harlingen C I S D will be opening the ninth grade academy, school year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and we would like to establish a speed school zone for twenty miles per hour, the zone for school, uh, operation hours. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, uh, could we read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending the Harlingen ordinance ninety-eight dash fifty-eight to establish a school zone for the ninth grade academy located at seventeen oh one Lozano Avenue, establishing penalty not to exceed two hundred dollars for violation of the provisions of this ordinance, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fourteen, consider to take action to declare the itemized list of non-real estate personal property as surplus personal property as recommended by staff and authorize city personnel to conduct a public auction of said property on July twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen.
Mayor Members of the Commission, every year the city, uh, tries to get rid of surplus property. Before we can do that, the property has to be declared surplus by the council. Uh, this year's auction is slated for July twenty-seventh, it's the last Saturday of the month. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the list. We have any questions you may have?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, I've been on board here, whatever, fifteen months, and I'm gonna say the, uh, the police department or somebody in the city about a year or so ago was, we were going to auction off surplus property, and we were gonna do it online. It, will this be an online auction, or will this be physical?
No, this is a physical auction. Uh, we, we sometimes carry on, um, online auctions, but those are usually for other, like, specialty items. Uh, this is more of your, uh, regular day-to-day use items.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the, uh, take action to declare the itemized list?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider to take action to approve and adopt a resolution approving cooperation with steering committee of city served by A E P T C C to review A E P Texas Central Company's requested approval of adjustment to its energy efficiency cost recovery factor hiring league council, consulting services to negotiate with the company directing necessary litigation appeals, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is over the public's requirement of law, requiring notice of this resolution to league council.
Mayor Members of the Commission, uh, the city of McAllen is taking the lead in, in this, uh, request that was filed by A E P. Chris Booster is the attorney, um, that's handling the case with Lloyd Gosling. Um, we're, staff is recommending that we approve the resolution. There is no cost to the city, uh, until this case is settled. And any fees are being incurred by now, right now are being sent to A E P, and they are bearing the cost for paying all, uh, all our fees. Staff recommends approval of the, of the resolution.
So there's no cost to us, what's the benefit?
Uh, well, the benefit is that, uh, the rate adjustment, uh, probably will not be approved as to what A E P is recommending. Uh, our attorney, Chris Booster, is charged with looking at it, making sure that it's the least amount, uh, they can charge. Obviously, this is a pass through, goes on to the consumer, and so, uh, that's actually the benefit.
What other cities are participating?
Um, well, right now, city of McAllen, um, is taking the lead. Um, I had asked him for a list, but I, I don't have one. I can get that list to you, uh, tomorrow.
But it's expected to be several cities throughout the valley?
Oh, yes, yes.
Typically, several cities throughout the valley, and also some cities from some of the northern parts of the state. And it's, it's a typical process where the, where we have an expert attorney that would contest the, uh, the, the rate increase and, and try to minimize that for, for the taxpayers.
All right, um, is there a motion to accept staff's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item sixteen, consider to take action to approve the renewal of one-year contract between the city of Harlingen and Harlingen Youth Football League, the use of the athletic field at Victor Park.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Uh, the city contracts with a number of youth leagues, uh, in the area for use of city, uh, park facilities. In this particular case, this is Harlingen Youth Football League. They currently have a contract for the use of the football fields and adjacent areas at Victor Park. This is Expressway, uh, this is M Street, which goes into the park. That's the entrance to, to Tony Butler. Just to give everybody know where we are, that's Victor Pool. Uh, the contract, the current contract expires at the end of, by the way, that picture was taken in January.
I was gonna ask about the green water.
We are off-season. The current contract between the city and, and Harlingen Youth Football League expires at the end of this month, hence the renewal request, uh, before you tonight. Uh, again, the contract be for one year, proposed contract for one year. Two differences in this year's contract as opposed to the, the current contract, is the requirement of the league to maintain and clean the restroom, which is adjacent to the facility during their league events, uh, and that would bring them consistent with, with other youth leagues, um, in the city. And, um, over the last year, both the staff and, I believe, the commissioner too, have heard some, some issues regarding, um, the gate, uh, that this league charges to its, uh, attendees. And so, uh, what you have in, in your packet suggests, um, no more than fifty cents a day for kids, age eleven and under, and no more than a dollar a day for twelve and up. Yesterday's Parks Board, Parks Recreation Board meeting, uh, this, both of these items were discussed. And what was, uh, proposed by the Parks Board and agreed to by, by the league, uh, was one dollar a day, uh, for kids, and generally twelve dollars a day, or two dollars a day, um, for twelve and up. Uh, and again, um, both of these are recommended by the Parks Board and they agreed upon, um, with the league, uh, and so staff also recommends approval. A separate issue from the contract, uh, has to do, uh, with the bleacher locations. We go back to this picture, this picture's a little bit dated, uh, it's about two years old. We're talking about the bleachers, the bleachers out here are these right here on the picture. Uh, you have the home side, uh, and then the away side. About a year ago, the league approached the city staff, uh, and asked us to move the away side bleachers to the home side. So right now, uh, we did that. All of the bleachers are on the home side of the field. Now, the reason that the league asked us to do this at the time, uh, was to help with the condition of the field. With away side bleachers, you have, uh, attendees walking across, uh, the playing field, they were trying to, to limit that, um, and it seems to have worked over the last year. Uh, but I know that either the commission or, um, a citizen through the commission, uh, has had some inquiries as to why that occurred and, and, um, if they could be moved back. Uh, this was again, also discussed yesterday at the Parks Board meeting.
Why they moved the bleachers together? Who ordered that?
The league asked that it be done.
But why? Why'd they do it like that?
Uh, to keep, um, the reasoning of the, the league at the time was to keep people from walking across the field to the away side, uh, to keep the field conditions, uh, suitable for the youth league play.
Maybe you don't order the bar.
Excuse me, sir?
Why they move the benches? To, to get access to the people, to throw it out right away and charge it again? That's why they moved the bleachers like that?
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask that Senator to speak over here, because I don't want him to tell. If they never, never, uh, cleaned the restroom or anything, they asked them to send some people away to do it.
That's correct, Commissioners. It's never been a requirement of the contract for them to clean the bathrooms. Uh, in this case, we've added that to the contract, and that was discussed with the Parks Board, and the league has agreed to that. During their league play, they will maintain the bathrooms and restock it as well. Uh, that's something that they've never had to do before, but this new contract, if it is approved by the city council, will bring them consistent with all the other Vs in all the other facilities.
I'm gonna ask the attorney to, to review that, uh, contract again, because I'm not satisfied with that. We don't, we need to, we need to see it again, because it's, uh, too close. When they meeting, they got two days ago, and, and I guess I see it over here, Mario Montes again, and the contract.
And I believe also that the, uh, that is also gonna change, Paul. The, uh, Mario Montes will no longer be the president, they are the outgoing president, and, um, Javier Cortez is the outgoing vice president, and Emily Rinn is the outgoing treasurer. The incoming board members that are gonna take over is Stanley Contreras as the president, Sandra Martinez as the vice president, and Tina Manley as the secretary. And they are here to answer any questions you may have.
Can I do that, or just, just to throw it to somebody else like that? We need to put it to the powder, you can see.
I think, I think-
So I asked the attorney to review that contract.
I think one of the things with these contracts, Commissioner, as we move on to the new season, is, uh, we don't want the kids to suffer and not have someone in charge of the league so that they can still continue playing. The league starts when?
Uh, August first.
August first.
Yeah, that's, uh, I asked him for this, uh, for these papers so many months ago, and I know this is gonna come and happen, the same thing. What happened with the baseball, they want six months again, and then, but they're not gonna let it go like that, so I wanna ask the attorney to review that.
If the commission wants me to review it again and look at the contract, I'll do whatever, uh, favor the commission on this matter.
I had a couple of questions, Commissioner Sanchez, with these questions. The first question I had is on the, the fees, and as, as far as the one, one dollar per day and two dollars per day for the twelve and up. Is that per day, like, for that whole evening, like, they have evening games, they have maybe two games, three games?
It would be for the entire day, Commissioner. If the games start at five or, or seven, and it goes on till nine o'clock, it's one fee for the entire, that entire evening, or day.
Would, I think that was one of the issues that was-
Correct.
-culminating about people being charged every time they come out and in for that same evening.
Correct, and, and-
Sometimes they have kids of different age brackets of the same family, they would go in and play different games, and they were getting charged twice.
That's correct, Commissioner. As a matter of fact, the league did admit that, uh, they had, uh, a game where they charged folks one time to go in, asked them to exit the area, and then charge them again to go back in for the se- for the next game. But that didn't go over very well, as you can imagine. Uh, so, we've had a lot of comments about that, and Commissioner Sanchez brought, several commissioners brought that to our attention. We've had citizens call in also, and so we thought we would address that in the contract itself, where they can't charge more than X amount of money per day, per visitor. Now, the participants and the coaches don't get any, they don't get charged at all. If you're a player, if you're a cheerleader, if you're a coach, you're not gonna get charged to get in the game. Uh, we thought we'd go ahead and put that in the contract, that's never been in the contract before, but in order to, to address the concerns, we thought might as well include that language in there. And the Parks Board, uh, discussed that at yesterday's meeting, uh, the league was also there, they all agreed. Now, we did have, the difference is that we had, uh, staff initially proposed the fifty cents per day for eleven and under, and a dollar per day for twelve and up. Uh, the, uh, the Parks Board felt that, uh, in order to pay the referees and the scoreboard attendees and the concession folks, they needed to be a little higher so that we, they can cover their expenses, and so they, they proposed a dollar per day for eleven and, uh, under, and two dollars per day for twelve and up. And the league was okay with that.
Now, Paul didn't get a chance to finish his presentation as far as what the board had stated. I think you were about to get into the bleacher locations. I'd like to hear what the, the, uh, the board itself recommended and what was resolved as far as that, as far as the recommendations.
The board, did the board and the league didn't have a problem with moving the bleachers back? And so-
So the big concern there was sometimes some of the friction that can happen between the close proximity of the opposing teams?
And what's difficult to see on this, uh, picture is between the twenty-yard lines, there is a chain link, four-foot chain link fence, uh, that kinda divides the, the field, um, from the bleachers. And so the league simply requested that if, uh, the bleachers go back to this area, uh, that the same be provided there, and that would help keep folks off of the playing field when they're walking, uh, to that side.
Uh, I will say that, I mean, hats off to staff, 'cause I know I, I talked to Dan and, and you and, and staff a little bit over a year ago, maybe?
Yes.
Because of the football league and, and the issues they had with the, the conditions of the grass, that was really the, the main reason why I spoke with y'all, and, and I think staff's done a really good job on trying to rehabilitate that turf, and, uh, I think we're seeing some good results there. Uh, the one thing that I, I sort of echoed, I think, with, uh, one of the staff members stated, that tonight I wanna make sure that we don't hold up the actual league from moving forward with the, the venue that's provided here for our youth to play football. Uh, I think, uh, maybe at the end of your presentation, you'll be able to address any of the other remaining questions, but I think we need to be aware of the fact that if we don't make a good decision tonight, that may affect the ability of our kids to, to have somewhere to go play football for this season.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, Joe was discussing, that's what, that's what I asking for the papers long time ago, but they never bring that in. So, they playing games, and, and, and I'm not gonna let them play games with the community, and the, and the kids and the parents, that's the one they get affected. So that's why I need the attorney to review this contract.
I can't-
We're not gonna let it happen again.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Is the contract, I know that we, we had some controversy when we're talking about, what was it, the baseball? And, and we, we had to accommodate some people because they couldn't get their, their financials. This, the base contract is the same with every team now, we're kinda getting-
Correct.
Where they're all responsible for the bathrooms?
Correct.
Do we have any other areas where they charge an adm- admission fee? I mean, that, I think that's the real question that I have, I mean, we have soccer fields on the other side, we don't charge admission to go watch soccer.
The league does, yes.
The league does?
And when their cycle comes up, that will also be addressed, and there, in those contracts.
And so, if I have a five-year-old son that's playing in the football league, and I have a nine-year-old son playing in the football league, when the nine-year-old is playing, I'm not gonna be paying for the five-year-old 'cause he already played? 'Cause you're saying the participants are free-
Right.
For the entire day.
Football players- He needs to keep his uniform on so he can get back-
For the entire day, right?
Yes.
Part of the questions that, that I got in the phone calls, I got were, well, you know, we, we have a large family, we wanna go watch the kids play, we wanna bring all the rest of the kids to watch their brothers and sisters, and every time we walk in and out of the gate, there we are shelling out cash.
Right, and, and this contract takes care of that issue.
So are they gonna use, are they gonna use like a, some sort of a, how, how are you gonna control it? That's all I wanna ask. I wanna be fair for everybody, I know that y'all need to cover your expenses.
This is the same man that's been in the league for so many years already, right?
Before he gets up here, let me, let me just say that all of their contract compliance documents required of the league are on file and up to date.
Correct.
Uh, this week, we did get the audited financial report, uh, and so they are in compliance.
Good. Okay, so that addresses Commissioner Sanchez's concerns, that they're, that they've, they've produced everything that they're required to produce. Okay, uh, then, what's the question?
I just wanna know, how are, how are we gonna place the-
We spent thirty minutes on seventeen items, and we're, now we've spent fifteen minutes on you, on, for youth football.
My name's Javier Cortez. Let me, let me tell you something, this is very important for the community, and, uh, we're saying, uh, uh, for the kids and for the parents, so we're, we're, we need to clear this before-
I'm just, I was-
Or letting go, and then-
Just trying to-
We're gonna let the, the attorney to, to review the contract, that's all I, that's all I want.
Well, I, I think we can do that, we can approve it, so we can approve the contract subject to the attorney confirming the, the, the staff's interpretation that is that everything's been done. That's why I said, we, they, that's your concern, uh, we, I asked Paul, and he says they've, they've done everything, we can have Mr. Bildy also confirm that they've done everything that they're required to. So let's get your question answered.
That's all I have, just a real quick answer. Are, are you gonna use a tag, or how are you gonna control it?
We use a tag, it's stamped when you come in, you're charged one time.
Right.
Okay.
But what are you doing before?
It's always been a tag. We used to use tickets, we used to use, uh, markers, X's, uh, we had people that went to go get their own sharpie so they'd do their X's.
I'll be in the apartment, and I pray, I pay for my, for my grandson, and after they finish the game, you throw out, out, like a house.
We did that one time in two thousand and ten, at, at, on our, our original Tyfa League. It happened one time, uh, by the, end of that first game, we realized that was not gonna work.
And you're running two leagues on the same one?
It's two leagues, yes, there's one, one, from Monday to Thursday, for H Y F L, Tyfa is, on Saturdays only, it's four games, uh, through the season.
Okay.
And both of them cover, you pay once, you go in, uh, you, you're allowed to come in all day, you get stamped. Our issue was, our restrooms are outside, so we can't, uh, monitor who's paying or not, so we have to stamp you, uh, being that our restroom is our, outside our, our gates.
But who, whose container is that?
It's, it belongs to the league.
Okay.
I knew you had issues with that before.
I hate the container.
We painted it last year, uh, your request.
Could we find some sort of, it, it's visible from the expressway, driving past this nice park, we got this container out there in the middle of it, is there a way to-
We, we, we actually wanted to move it to the, behind the, the concession stand.
Just a comment, I'm gonna ask the staff to work with you on trying to hide-
Oh, like I said, I'm the outgoing, uh, board member, uh, the new members are here, uh, I'm sure they're, they just heard what you said.
Okay, well, that's my, that's my pet issue, is trying to keep the-
Since I've heard that before.
Looking good, so, I don't think that looks good out there.
May, Mayor, we, we made several improvements to the, uh, the, uh, the agreements that we've had in place based on concerns that, that we've had from some of the, uh, the citizens and some of the commissioners. Among them are financial requirements, that they are not bound to, to, uh, report to us, uh, also the, the, uh, the charges that they could make per day. I think the intent of staff is to try to be consistent, so as the new contract come out, we're gonna, uh, change those as well. And then the other requirement that, that's in the contract, Mayor, is that before they do any physical changes, they would have to come and check with us, so that, that would be addressed in the contract as well.
Okay, all right, well, all these are good points that have been raised, and, and they, I think they've all been addressed, I hope they've been addressed to your satisfaction, Commissioner. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the contract subject to the city attorney-
No, I don't wanna approve yet, I want the, the attorney to review.
Okay, that's what I was, that, that's about what I was just about to say, I would like to entertain a motion that we approve the contract subject to Mr. Bildy confirming staff's, uh, recommendation and, and that, that all of the requirements of the contract have been fulfilled.
So, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, a, I, a couple of items, uh, I guess, where's Paul? So that, this is, this league is now, has a standard contract equal to all other standard contracts of these type of sports for youth in the city, is that correct?
Yes, the, the restroom clause brings them into the consistency.
Okay, so there's no difference?
Actually, the fee, the fee is now puts them above.
Okay, but, but other than that-
Yes, correct.
Every, every T and I is identical?
Correct.
Well, the one, the old ones, Commissioner, the new one, there, there's, there's some old ones that don't have all the class-
Yes, yes, yeah.
But it remains, we're gonna break them into-
But we're in the process of standardizing all the contracts.
Right, when their, when their cycle comes up, they'll-
Okay, that's fine. And then the people will be stamped as they come in, so they could exit and enter at, at will, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the proper financials have been filed, and they're all up the snuff, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, is there any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, thank you all for being here, uh, we have board members, incoming, outgoing, incoming. All right, thank you for being here, thank you for, uh, helping these kids have a good experience.
That's right.
Item seventeen, consider to take action to approve the city of Harlingen as a sponsor of Suclinica Health Fair on August tenth, two thousand and thirteen, providing the city's portable stage at no cost.
Mayor, the-
Well, we, we were approached by Suclinica, they have a back-to-school event, uh, they're, they will have, uh, hundreds of booths, or lots of booths set up, uh, to provide school supplies for the kids. Congressman Valen tends to be there, so it's gonna be a big event, and if we're a sponsor, we can help them with the stage, uh, so do I hear a motion to approve the city being a sponsor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that.
And, any other discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say that Suclinica does one hell of a job for the community, surrounding community, and I appreciate everything that you all do.
Thank you so much.
I've been to this event before, and it's just a thrill to see all the little kids running around and enjoying, and I appreciate-
We're very excited, thank you so much. This is our tenth anniversary, we're gonna be passing out more than twenty-two hundred backpacks and school supplies this year, and just in Harlingen, we'll service over thirty-five hundred folks, so we're very excited, thank you, I appreciate your help.
Okay, all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, well, thank you, we're glad to be participating as sponsor of this event. Yeah, all right, so we're gonna go back to item eleven, which is the consideration and take action to grant a variance request to the city of Harlingen subdivision ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-eight, section four point one, point eight, and four point two point seven. With regards to fire hydrant, uh, required on Mallory Street on the proposed J R Palacio subdivision, varying legal description of two point three acres of land, out of block six, Black Brothers Subdivision, located in the corner of Expressway eighty-three Furniture Road and Mallory Street, have consequences for our Palacios. Before we, uh, get to the action item, I'd like to entertain a motion that we go into executive session and consult, uh, with the city attorney, present to section five five one point oh seven one, Texas Open Meeting Center.
So, Mayor, second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're now executive session, the, the city commission is gonna go back to the back room and talk to our lawyer for a few minutes, and, uh, then we'll come back out and take action on this item. Okay, we're, we're out of executive session at six thirty-eight, and we're back on item eleven, this time I'd like to entertain the motion that we table this item to allow the staff to have, uh, their time to work on this issue.
I'll make a motion that we table this item to have staff work on this issue.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Items, uh, items tabled, now we're gonna go to item nineteen, closing second session on the following items, pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D, P T C A, Government Code, section five fifty-one, point oh seven, one, consultation with, uh, city attorney or outside legal counsel regarding city of Harlingen versus Union Pacific Railroad and Rio Valley Switching, and in connection with city's rights, privileges, and communities arising out of requests for reopen or submitted by firefighters, uh, bargaining agent, and those intent to bargain, submitted by police officers, bargaining agent, and, uh, regarding commercial, financial information, business prospect known as Project Toddler, so we're motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in executive session, the city commission will go back. Round of executive session at seven forty.